Adrian Anne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You're hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 1st, 2021, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Sustainable Dubuque Update.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for November 1st, 2021. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Buell.
Here.
Council members Kavanaugh.
Here.
Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Sustainable Communities Coordinator Gina Bell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gina Bell, City Sustainability Coordinator. Let me get this set. Okay. So, we're going to start off by talking about buildings and energy as it relates to our Climate Action Plan. And I'm going to invite Shane up to speak. He'll introduce himself, and he has the first part. And then we're going to hear from the teens, and I will tie it all in a pretty bow at the end. So, thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name's Shane Hooper. I'm with the, I'm a combination inspector with the Inspection and Construction Services Department. Thank you for allowing us to come here and talk about a few of our projects that we're using to promote sustainable housing in Dubuque. It's been a real treat to work on these programs. Forward.
Look back into your PowerPoint.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the protocol here, but feel free to ask me questions as we go along. If any, I know some of you know me. I'm super passionate about this subject and more than, more than welcome to dive into the weeds on any, any, any of these things. Just a little background before we got started. Prior, I started working for the City of Dubuque about three years ago, more or less. And prior to that, prior to me coming here, I was interested in the subject, the built environment and the energy efficiency especially that goes along with it. But I was thinking more on a global scale, right? Like CO2 levels, where they're at this year. But after I started Dubuque as a rental inspector, the face of energy efficiency, you know, became a lot more clear. You know, it's, it's personal and it affects individuals throughout the community. So, as inspectors, when we're in our inspector land, as we call it, talking to each other, sharing stories, you know, it becomes really apparent that people are suffering with, you know, the energy burden, the cost of, of providing heating, cooling, hot water to their unit. But they're also struggling with the comfort issues, right? They've got draft issues. It's, you know, people are concerned for their younger children, their older adults. And also, it's a, it's a big stressor for people. You know, not being comfortable, not being financially secure in your, in your unit just adds a lot of mental stress. So, so I went from more of a global thinker to now I'm kind of an address thinker, you know, thinking about the individuals as we go. So, in our, one of our discussions, we started talking about like, how, how do we get programs to, how do we solve this? And our, and our biggest problem was, we had no data, right? We're just people going through apartments and guessing, you know, anecdotal evidence, like that looks bad, this looks bad. But we really didn't have numbers. So, we came up with this little program. I forgot how you did this. Forward. There we go. So, we decided to create a little metric to just see where everybody's at. At this time, we had no idea of any programs. We were just kind of, just winging it in the back with the, with the limited resources that we had. So, after a bunch of iterations where I was told it was too complicated, too complicated, too complicated, we finally boiled it down to an idea, or we came up with an idea that we wanted to be able to teach, or be able to teach people to rate their own home, rate others' homes with just a little bit of training, maybe a slideshow. And, and that's what the Teen Resiliency Corps here is, is helping us do. So, it started out as our rental program, our rental inspectors, and we rated five different categories. And we'll go through that heating source, lighting, water heater, windows, and insulation. I think everybody kind of knows, knows what those things are. And we gave them a score of zero to three points, so a perfect score is fifteen. Oddly enough, fifteen, a perfect score of fifteen is probably beyond code-built homes, right? We're on 2012 International Energy Conservation Code. The most current edition is 2021, which is a lot closer to that fifteen. So, you know, even, we're kind of still working on determining what a good number is, but at least we're gathering data where we can put that together. So, if you're looking at the slides here, the color we want to see is this olive color, the thirty-seven percent for these heating systems. And that's kind of the upper level inefficiency in heating systems here. That's about ninety-five percent efficient natural gas furnace, or air, air-to-air or ground-to-air heat pump would qualify for that also. Water heating, you can see, we're only at seventeen percent at that upper level. Anecdotally, that's something we really noticed in the field. We just have a lot of those open combustion water heaters in the field. Lighting, making really big strides on lighting. It's super easy to change and anybody can influence that. Windows, you know, that, that's our biggest number, seventy-five percent at dual-pane windows. Obviously, there are higher-level windows than that, triple-pane, even quad-pane at this point. But they're so rare now, especially in rental units, we're just not going to see them for probably a decade. Insulation, being an older city, it's obviously a sore point for us. We have a lot of brick buildings, a lot of older wood structures that are just difficult to retrofit in a, in a really high-level way. And that's it, all put together. So, just a few key points on those five different rating systems. So, I was looking at some of the numbers from NRL Today, and in Iowa in general, heating systems account for about fifty percent of the BTUs we use in a, in a home, right? So, it, this is obviously a big pinch point for people. So, is, you know, heating costs, obviously you have kind of three legs. One, the appliance. Two, the building that it's in, the structure. And three, occupant behavior. This is one of the key areas where we developed a program to help with. So, we came up with this Energy Savers Program that incentivizes replacement of heat sources. So, we're looking at low-to-mud income homeowners or, or tenants to take advantage of this. And then the other requirement is, they got to, they got to pay their own heating bills. So, we didn't want a big property manager that pays for a whole building taking advantage of it, although it would help in the carbon output. It really doesn't help those low-to-mud income tenants. So, when we replace a furnace, it's got to meet that top tier. It's got to be a three, or it doesn't qualify. So, we're just, you know, if we're going to invest money in this, we're going to help the people, but we also want to get as much carbon benefit as we can for the city and the world. Lighting, lighting, it's, it's super easy to replace. I don't know why non-LEDs even exist in this world. They, you can get them in any color, intensity. They're super cheap. The Dubuque County Energy District gave us quite a lot of light bulbs last year. So, some of our inspectors have them in the trunk. So, if we're seeing a lot of incandescent bulbs in the house, we can say, hey, how about a half a dozen bulbs? Would that help you? And more than off, more often than not, people are more than willing to take those on. Water heating is another big BTU user or provider of the home. The latest numbers are right around twenty percent for the average Iowa household. This program, similar in the ESP program, has the furnaces, but we're limiting it to fifteen hundred dollars just because the appliance is a little easier to install, a little cheaper to buy. Again, the replacement's got to be the top tier, a condensing furnace, a heat pump water heater, any of those kind of things. Or a on-demand water heater is another one that qualifies. Windows, a lot of windows have been replaced in town already. And one of the, one of the drivers is the City Lead Program that's been around since 1993. Also, as you've probably seen on commercials or TV or newspapers, they've got good salesmen, right? It's pretty easy to sell a window because you can see it and kind of feel the difference right away. Generally, they're less drafty. As far as the payback period for energy efficiency, generally window replacements are around a twenty-year payback, so not really the best investment for strictly energy standards. But the good news is, we're made a heck of a dent in the city already to get to that next level.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So, is there a difference between wood windows and vinyl windows as far as that insulation factor?
A little bit, yeah. So, all modern windows come up with a U-value. So, it's like a modern vinyl window has a U-value of around point three to point three-three, somewhere in there. So, the inverse of that is generally the R-value, which we know if we hear of an insulation. So, so that's an R-three. So, a good wood window and good repair with a storm on it is point five U-value in general. So, that's a U-value of point two. So, when you start doing the math difference, you know, it's a pretty tiny BTU difference. I think there's some psychological effect, right? I got a new window, it's warmer. It may not always be the case. But the key in Dubuque is in good repair, right? So, we've replaced a lot of these windows in the Lead Program and other programs that are just drafty and shot. And they're replaced for other reasons other than energy efficiency, although that's a happy benefit that we got from it. Insulation, the toughest to analyze really, right? Because most of it's hidden. We're not crawling up in attics to see what's there. We kind of see what we can see, and generally, we're just going on date of construction. So, right around post-World War II, we started caring a little bit about insulating homes. That's why I made nineteen fifty the date there. Well-insulated to code would be, you know, something built past like mid-nineties. That's kind of when we started to think a little bit more serious about insulation and, well, there's a whole bunch of different things about vapor, vapor barriers and condensation points in the wall, things like that. So, probably a really good extension of the ESP Program, one of the easiest places to insulate is the attic, right? Because it's generally open. There's a misconception, we don't really insulate attics more because heat rises, doesn't matter that much which way the heat's going. It's just, we can dump a lot of it in cheap, cheaply. And that kind of offsets some of the losses from the windows, the doors, the floors, the walls that are, that are harder to insulate. So, about a month ago, for Energy Savers Program, that was the furnace and water heater replacement. We had about sixty-three applicants. Thirteen applicants were rejected, some for non-communication, some had a high-efficiency appliance already installed. It may be twenty or thirty years old, but we had to discount it because, you know, they're kind of in that upper tier already. And then there's a fair amount of mobile home individuals with older appliances, appliances on the fritz, but they didn't qualify for the CDBG funds, so we just had to categorically exclude them. We got about fifty applications, more or less, in the, some part of the flow. We've got eight completed already. I think we're a little higher than that right now. So, seven were owner-occupied homes. And it, we've been looking for more, we've been getting more applications for furnaces than water heaters in general. I thought it would be a little bit different, but just because of the cost difference, but I think, you know, because the heat source is fifty percent of your BTUs, it probably makes the most sense to push that the fastest. Rent Lab, so we're thinking, now we're starting to get data collected, what are we going to do with it, right? We wanted to be able to use this in a meaningful way other than just internal communication. So, I, we remembered about three years ago, four years ago, at the Sustainable Communities Conference, Rent Lab was a presenter there. I sat in on the presentation. I was like, this would be a great way to put a number out there so tenants can say, hey, I'm looking at these two addresses, which one is probably going to cost me less money, right? So, if, if I can rent with some, that place with a score of ten over a score of five, you know, I, I think maybe rents are the same, but my overall monthly outgoing's probably going to be less. So, we're hoping that, one, that gives people the opportunity to make more informed choices, but two, if people start making those informed choices, we're hoping that that puts pressure kind of from the bottom up onto property owners to maybe make some improvements on their own will to, to be more attractive to those kind of discerning customers. So, Rent Lab, we're kind of working through the process right now, and they're building the site right now. But the way it looks is, you just kind of get a map, like a Google map, and there's pins for all these different addresses. And you can click on, you know, if I'm looking at twenty-five, twenty North Grandview, I can see the score and some other details. People can load up their utility bills also onto the site, so people can get a good grasp of how this is performing. So, I'm pretty excited about that, and I hope it works the way we, we want it to, expect it to. So, there's our scorecard. Is this the beginning of your section? All right. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Shane?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. So, this scorecard is what the teens are taking out, and we're going to share a little bit about their work. The Teen Resiliency Corps, you've heard about this before. We did it in 2020 as a COVID response. And in 2021, we proposed to the National League of Cities Leadership and Community Resilience Grant to reboot the program with new teens and focus on energy efficiency and gathering this data. So, the teens, we took what we learned from 2020. They wanted more training, and we, we did a little bit better of a recruitment, and we have now eleven teens participating. They represent Washington, Jefferson, Mazzakelli Middle Schools, and Senior and Hempstead High Schools. We're working in partnership with Green Iowa Maricor, as well as the Multicultural Family Center. And so, we're based out of the MFC. We meet there Wednesday afternoons and Saturdays, and then we head out into the neighborhoods. And they go door-to-door in downtown Dubuque. It's not only into rental properties, it's just every door on, along, along their map. And they ask about energy efficiency as well as checking in on folks, because part of building this resiliency door-to-door is checking in on our neighbors and saying, hey, I'm here, is there anything that I can help you with? So, before we sent the teens out though, we did do some training, and so they learned about resiliency in general, how Dubuque defines resiliency and what it means. They learned about disaster recovery resiliency, and, and what you're seeing on your screen are reflections that they did related to resiliency. They learned about climate action, and they learned about what, what might a good Dubuque look like versus a bad Dubuque. And they learned about energy burden and why that matters. And they also learned about complete streets, and they made these reflections. And then they also learned, or the reflection was, what does a resilient Dubuque look like? And overwhelmingly, their response was, it's rooted in relationships, it's about caring for one another, and it's human-centered. So, like Shane was talking about, he had this global view, but now it's an adverse view. And here's another reflection on resiliency as it relates to times of emergency. But resiliency building is every day. It's not just in times of emergency or as a response to an emergency. So, more practice that we did was door knocking. So, we gave everyone a fake personality, and they got to stand behind a door. We tried to have, have this be fun, and then teens got to knock and sort of incorporate or find out what a, what a personality might look like, and then respond. And then we gave them a script. So, we wanted to give them some guidance, but also have them make it their own. And so, we gave them some key points they needed to cover. And, and then they went out and sort of, it was like a choose-your-own-adventure, like how does the person respond? If you say, can we come in and assess your energy efficiency? And they say yes, then you proceed. But if they're hesitant, there are some other options that you have. So, they practiced their scripts before they went out. They also go out with an energy scorecard QR code, so if someone isn't interested in having the teens come in, they can scan this and fill out the form themselves. So, it's an additional data gathering point. And then for those who are interested, we're also offering a QR code to sign up for a free home energy audit with the Green Iowa team. And the Green Iowa team is going out with the teens as well, so it's, it's also serving as an outreach point for them. And then they have this, they have a handy-dandy booklet that has this information in it that looks at what the scores are and examples of what it might look like, what they might find. So, some of them, homeowners don't want to let them in the door, so they have a conversation at the door and just say like, oh, hey, you know, is it like this one? Is it like this one? So, we wanted to have them be prepared for any, any situation. So, they have water heating and the different scores and what they might look like, windows, as Shane covered, lighting, and the different scores that go with it, and then building shell and insulation. We also figured we had an opportunity, as people were going door-to-door, to look at water pipe and, and sort of assess who has lead pipes still, who has copper pipes. And again, this is a data collection, so we can continue to sort of craft solutions for actual Dubuquesers and not just what we think might be out there. So, here's a picture of the teens at the MFC getting ready to go out door-to-door. We have a goal of four thousand door knocks and a thousand energy scorecards in a very short amount of time. So, we're hoping we can get there. They're, they've been doing a really great job so far. Here's first payday, and for many of them, it was their first ever paycheck, so that was exciting to get to be a part of that. But as, I can stand up here and tell you all of the things that I've witnessed and the growth that I've seen over the last several weeks that we've been working on this, but I want to invite four teens to come up and share their experience. So, we have Addison, Damonte, Harmony, and Nevea, who are just going to give a brief reflection on, on their experience so far.
I am fifteen-year-old, fifteen-years-old and a freshman at senior high school. Initially, I wanted to participate in TRC to help out more in the community and to interact with more adults. I keep going back each week because I love the, all the interactions and focus on helping people with improving their energy efficiency. This work is important to me because I am a younger teen trying to make this community a better place by helping people with their homes and with better safety.
Hi, my name is Damonte Smith. I'm fifteen, and I go to senior high school. I like that we get to help with their bills and information. I like that this is a job, and I'm here for the money, too. I want people to know that Teen Resiliency Corps is about helping people and helping that their homes are energy-efficient, and if not, we can help with that. I hope we can reach at least half our goal. I know this experience will help with better jobs, and what I'm doing now will go on my resume.
Hello, my name's Harmony Paul. I'm fourteen, and I attend senior high school. For me, the TRC team provides a safe environment, and the people are very nice and funny. At first, I came for the money, but I stay because of the job and the people. The work is important to me. Oh. Okay. The work's important to me because it benefits the greater good and the community. The TRC fits into my plans because I want friendship, multiple friendships, the ability of trust, and then a sense of responsibility and integrity. To me, as a whole, we do our best when we interact with others, whether that be our coworkers or residents, and I enjoy checking up on the residents when we go out.
Hi, my name is Nevea Alfred. I'm thirteen, and I attend at Washington Middle School. I want to share what I like best about the Teen Resiliency Corps. I like how we get to be, meet new people and also have the chance to make money, but we also get to help people with their energy. TRC has helped me be more independent and talk more and help the community.
We, we try to reflect on our work as well as a part of building resiliency within the Teen Resiliency Corps as well. It's not just about the, the greater community, but also for the teens themselves. So, fifty percent by 2030, we have our Community Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. You may have heard of it, usually from me, but in it, we have a goal to reduce by ten percent citywide energy consumption in the next just over eight years. And so, this means lots of different things, increasing energy efficiency in city facilities as well as in other, other parts of our community, promoting energy audits that the Green Iowa team provides, and other, there are other providers of that, taking advantage of energy efficiency rebates and financial incentives. And some of this we're already doing, but we, again, we want to understand what our housing stock consists of so that we can create solutions that make sense for, for our community. One of these things that is already in existence, thanks to Corey, is the Municipal Energy Reinvestment Fund. So, in fiscal year 2017, City Council approved twenty thousand dollars to put into a revolving loan fund for city departments to use for energy efficiency upgrades. And prior to that, energy efficient upgrades had to be budgeted by individual departments and approved, and they just, they sort of fell off the priority list because departments were doing, working on other things. And so, this helps, helps departments to be able to access energy efficiency upgrades without having to worry about putting it into their budget. So, most recently, the fire headquarters updated all of their lighting fixtures. And we had, we had planned it out to be about a two-year payback, but they paid seventy-five percent back in the first year. And they will then get to, they'll finish paying it back, and so then the revolving loan will be available to other departments, but they also will get to keep any additional savings and reinvest it in fire headquarters so that they can keep increasing their energy efficiency or their green building features. And, and under this model, we get to support department managers and those who are in charge of our facilities in implementing the Climate Action Plan. And this is something that's already existing. It's, I'm not asking for more money for this, but it's, it's something that we want more departments to take advantage of, and so we can continue to, to grow this. And then here is my friendly reminder to City Council that you also have a role in our climate action, and this is from the Buildings and Energy Section in our Climate Action Plan. And the reason that this is important is because as we did community outreach for the Climate Action Plan and continue to do outreach related to the Climate Action Plan, we spoke with representatives from various communities who all agreed that downtown buildings and multi-unit housing for lower-income communities need to be more energy efficient. And so, we can support that through policy and programming, much like what the city is doing through the Housing Department that Shane shared. And in addition, oftentimes, they, they're inefficient buildings, and the people who can least afford to have high energy bills are the ones that have the highest energy bills. So, this is energy burden. We're not going to do that. We talked about it with our low-income solar project as well. And we really want to keep addressing those energy burdens for our most vulnerable residents. Additionally, for rental units, it's oftentimes the retrofits fall to the landlord, and they don't see the direct benefit because they're not paying the utilities. So, it's oftentimes not a high priority. So, we want to be able to support them through, again, policies and programs. And then, we will answer any questions and just are really excited about using tools that we have and the data that we're collecting to keep developing new ideas and be innovative in our work. I mean, as Shane was saying, this was sort of like just an idea they dreamed up. And now, we have teens that are going door-to-door, filling out the scorecard. And we want to continue to meet our mission of being more equitable and sustainable and resilient. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gina, Shane, and the students who are here, representing all of the work that you've done. Anyone have any questions for Laura?
First of all, thank you to all of you for being here tonight, and especially the young people that spoke. Your words are very impactful, so thank you so much. My question is about the door-knocking process, and Gina, I don't know if you can address that. I just wondered how residents are responding and what kinds of issues you're finding. I just think that would be a very interesting fact.
In my groups, we've been seeing a lot of people with, like, holes in their walls, almost explosions, and just leaking everywhere and not being able to shower.
Yeah, I would just add, so as they're going out and focusing on energy efficiency, they have discovered several other issues in housing. And so, we're making note of that. And then, we're working with the housing inspectors to get that put into our system to then be addressed if it is a rental unit. And they, I think, have had tremendous growth in, from the first week coming back and being like, you're not going to believe what we saw, to now saying like, hey, we can help you. We're going to get this in the system and have somebody check it out. Or, you don't have to live like this, let's work to find solutions. So, they have encountered several different things. I think in terms of what I've heard from people's response, it is varied. So, some people are like, sure, come on in. Other people are like, um, you can, we'll stay at the door, and I will go through this with you. And I think we've had a few door slams. But other than that, people have been pretty open. And sometimes, people just want to talk, right? They don't want to talk about the energy scorecard, but they want to talk. And so, we're here for that as well.
I think that's a really awesome component. That's probably something they don't often see, is someone just coming to their door and asking, how are you doing? So, thank you for that. Thanks for your response.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gina, this is an exciting program. And as a lot of us are finding out from our campaigns and door-knocking, we've got some issues with our housing stock. I mean, I've seen a lot of it in my neighborhood. And I would be more than willing to provide you a list of some places that these kids might be able to work on. Or I'd love to invite you to some of the neighborhood associations. They would be more than willing to give them a couple of houses to work on as well. How many, was it that your total? I missed that part, like, how many houses total?
Our goal is to knock on 4,000 doors and fill out 1,000 scorecards.
And what time, what is your deadline?
Through December. It's getting darker and colder.
You are running out of time, okay.
We had a slow start. But I'm also looking for creative ways we can continue to fund this work. And so, hopefully, well, one is through a budget request. But there are other options that we have as well. And it's been grant-funded up to this point. And so, I'm still looking for grants as well to continue it because just the door-knocking in general has been really fruitful for the community, I think.
After Wednesday, I could probably provide you at least 20 houses to look at.
Anyone else? Mr. Jones?
This is just beyond awesome. A lot of people live their whole lives and never get the opportunity to knock on a door and make something better for somebody. So, wow, congratulations, thank you. This is a program with enormous value for everybody engaged in it and everybody who gets their door knocked down. So, I'm wowed beyond where I ever thought to be tonight coming in. And congratulations to whoever hired Shane, by the way. I knew him a little bit before I came to work for the city. The guy built a house that I think he can heat it with a Labrador Retriever. He walks the walk and talks the talk.
Mr. Resnick?
Thank you. So, two quick questions. First of all, thanks for the presentation. So, knowing what we know from the data that we got, that a lot of times, lighting is an issue in many homes. And the leadership at Lowe's has been very generous with their partnerships here. Do we ever think about visiting and just have a nice LED light bulb that they can show them the difference? And that example, and you know, sometimes people just want them to reach up there and get it, you know? Maybe have a ladder or something. But just, that might be a nice partnership or just something right when you visit them. The second is that might be a possibility, or have you talked about something like that?
We actually, I didn't mention it, we take out LED bulbs. And for people who are participating, we offer them some bulbs. And then, also, like, if people are hesitant but still need an LED bulb, we give them that. Because that helps us meet our reduction goals as well. So, we are carrying LED bulbs with us.
So, check that off, done. All right. So, is there, my second question, is there a follow-up with these folks? Then maybe, you know, after they've seen things, and maybe they could follow up with some resource suggestions? Or maybe they can do that right there at that first visit? But is there kind of a follow-up? Because the same folks who enjoy this first visit really enjoy a second visit now that they know people and they know they're coming, and you know, there's been some introduction. It might even be a little bit, even a better kind of a communication.
Yeah, we haven't, we have follow-up through Green Iowa. So, our Green Iowa team has taken all of the homes that they went through and are looking at the lower scores, and then reaching out to them and saying, hey, we can provide a free home energy audit and potential weatherization. And so, there is some follow-up there. In terms of going back to the doors, we're still trying to do individual door knocks now. But I think if we had more time, we would definitely go back. I know that in the first iteration of the Teen Resiliency Corps, the five teens were working just in their neighborhoods. And so, they were going multiple times to the doors, and people loved that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. First of all, to the students who are working here, I just have to tell you how impressed I am with you. And those of you who spoke, for sure. But then, also, the rest of you that we haven't heard from, I'm just thinking, you know, I've been a college professor, and I've had to teach college students how to have, like, a conversation with adults and be able to speak on the phone with somebody. And I'm thinking of you going to people's doors to cold-call in that way. That's a, that is an advanced skill. So, it's very impressive. And don't let that escape you, the skills that you're gaining doing this. It's, some of you said, it's far more than just the paycheck. You're getting something big out of this, and it's incredibly helpful to us as a city. So, thank you very much for that. Two questions, Gina. How is it going with the, you said you collaborate with other departments to solve some of these problems. Is that something that's actually happening right away? Or is that something that is kind of just in the works or on a list somewhere? We're kind of waiting on it.
So, in terms of the MRF, we are finishing up with fire. And another fire station has expressed interest in using that fund. So, it's, I mean, it's a pretty slow process, right? Because it's like a whole year, and then we wait for the payback. So, for that revolving loan fund, that's where we're at right now. And then, in terms with the teens and the scorecards, it's primarily with housing and getting the information into Rent Lab. So, those are the two that are currently happening.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Is that just information that's getting parked then for future reference? Or is it something that is actionable right away? I mean, we taking action on the places that have like a hole in the wall, for example?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. That's going into our web QA system so that inspectors can then put it into their process.
Oh, that's great. That's good to hear. Okay. Second question is, you know, you mentioned looking for more funding. Is there anything on your radar with the, some of the new legislation coming from Washington DC with, you know, there's all kinds of stuff that's happening right now. Is there anything that's coming that maybe we could be aware of to know that this is going to be something that we can look at? To be able to continue to fund this or to create new programs or something else like this within another department? I mean, I'm just kind of curious what's on your radar with that.
There are a couple youth-focused, climate-action-type things out there that I'm tracking. I haven't seen anything that seems like it's the perfect fit or it's looking for way larger capacity than we have. But as they come up and as they cross my desk, I'll certainly let you know and work within the city team to apply for that.
Excellent, yeah. You've always done an excellent job with that, so I have full confidence in that aspect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Gina and Shane, for your presentation. And on behalf of the council, I want to thank all of the students for all that you've done to help us with our sustainability and resilience in the city of Dubuque. And I hope this is just the beginning for all of you, that you'll stay involved and, you know, continue to do good works to help others, less fortunate maybe, but really to make it a better place for everyone to live and work. So, thank you for all you've done. Okay, there being no further business on this work session agenda, we will stand adjourned.